All right, we'll call the Tremont Pining Board Meeting of Tuesday, July 26th to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, we have Lawson-Woolson, Brett Witham, Beth Gock, myself, Mark Good, and CEO John Larson, applicants and members of the public. Jeff has notified us he's not going to be here tonight because he's refused from these proceedings anyway, so I'll take a motion to excuse his absence.
Want me to make a motion to excuse Jeff Young?
A second?
Second.
Motion and a second to excuse Jeff Young. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Four nothing? Okay. Anybody get a chance, everybody get a chance to look over the minutes? Okay, because they came late again, I think she was a little late, it's my understanding. Hopefully that won't happen again. And anybody see anything and want to make any amendments? It looked fine to me.
Looked good to me.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of July 12th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 12th as submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second on the table to approve the minutes of July 12th, 2022, as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Four nothing, okay. Full business, pointy head. As you know, this has gone through a lot of different revisions. And our CEO has suggested that it be best for the record to go through completeness review again and make sure that everything is there, and then schedule a public hearing for our next meeting. Some of you folks might be expecting a public hearing tonight. It was never advertised and for that reason, so... If you feel it doesn't need to be, go through completeness review. What do you think?
So, the question on the table is, I want to make sure clear, whether it needs, whether hearing needs to be advertised before you have one, whether we need to...
Two other things, the hearing wasn't advertised.
Yeah.
So we can't hold a public hearing. It isn't legally advertised.
Yep.
Can we accept public comment?
We could.
Well, we still need to, I mean, we still need to have a hearing.
We'll still have, if we find this complete, we still have to hold a public here.
For sure.
So there will be that.
Right.
Before we move on to, you know, thorough review and finding some facts and that sort of thing. Seems to be enough revisions here that we should take a look at it and find it complete.
Yeah.
Just to make it, get clean for the record.
Yeah, and it might be helpful to hear a comment on that, maybe? I find that sometimes the parties help to kind of focus in on the issues.
A comment on what now?
Sorry. Well, let's proceed, I guess. I would withhold my comment at this point.
I had a couple of questions, though, for Ed Baer and Ms. Watt before we move on. What is the removed stone check dam note within identified wetland boundary?
There was a note on, it was one of the revisions in the plan. There was a note about an optimal check dam that I removed because with the updated delineation information, it's in the middle of the plan. So it is unnecessary, it was unnecessary.
And where was this located?
On, it was probably up here.
On C2.
On C2?
An earlier version of C2.
Oh, okay.
It was a minor note right here.
Because I saw that check dam's still on C3, so...
It's a standard detail that you started.
Any other questions or comments before we move on, go through this checklist? I think we can get through pretty quickly, we've been through it several times.
John, is this the checklist that we went through in April? The one that you provided on our... I'm just wondering if...
They're saying we just checked some more.
And that's, that's the copy that we have in front of us?
The one where John has crossed things?
Crossed things out, that's the results of our March 28th.
I have an earlier one.
I don't, no, I just wanted to know if this replaced the last time we went through this. Great. I bet. Great.
Okay. Fully executed signed copy of the application for site plan review. We do have that, that's in here, Mr. Baer, is that correct?
Yes, that is there as along with the revisions that we have made and submitted as of the 30th of June.
Yep, okay. Evidence of payment of the application, we have that. Copy of a receipt in there. One original and nine copies of written materials plus one original and nine sets of maps. The maps or drawings must be at least scaled, at scale sufficient to allow review of items listed under approval standards, but in no case greater than one inch equals 100 feet. I did have one comment on the plan. The revised plan as in here in, is it C1? Yes, C1. The date is from 10/29/2021. And since this is a revision, it'd be nice if it had the revised date on there.
It's in the revision block to the, the iterations of the drawings are recorded in the revision block.
Right above that date.
Right, yeah.
Perpendicular to it, it's hard to read, Mark, that says.
Okay, yeah, excuse my old eyes, okay. So we're okay with that?
Yeah, I think it's a really useful way to date it and to be able to see that this is the third revision since the original drawings.
Okay, record owner's name, address and phone number. Advocate's name, address and phone number. Got that, it's on the application. Location of all required buildings, setbacks, yards and buffers. Now, Ms. Watt, you made some changes here, or somebody made some changes. What units were actually different on this drawing? Just eight or nine?
Are we...
There'd be a different paragraph, Mark. This is just about building setbacks, yards and buffers.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we'll, we'll get to location of proposed buildings.
Okay, okay.
But, yeah.
Down there, thank you.
Yep.
So we're all set there?
Yes, I think that we've got buffers and...
Yep. Names and addresses of all property owners within 500 feet of any or all property boundaries? Been there before, I think we've got that. Sketch map showing the general location of the site within the town based on tax map. And I believe we have that, but that's on...
Find it in that.
That's in this booklet here, yeah, okay, got that? Tax map and lot number of the parcel or parcels on which the project is located, we've got that. Copy of the deed to the property. An option to purchase the property or other document to demonstrate right title or interest, we have the deed. Name, registration number and seal of the person who prepared the plan is applicable. We do have Ms. Watt's seal. Evidence of applicant's technical and financial capability to carry out the project as proposed. Be self-funded.
Sorry, Mark, can we just go back to the seal? In the revised submission, we have a new sheet L1 that's under Hedifine's stamp, but it says it's submitted by Design Landscape Architecture. Can you just share with us what the relationship between those two entities are?
Steve Rebel with Con- Concentrity Design, Project Design has been consulting to do the buffering.
All right.
And are you consulting, are you a consultant to Hedifine?
Hedifine for the...
For the project? And does that show up on the drawing?
There's a note that I prepared the drawing in for that.
Or new SWR?
Yes.
Okay.
And the plan notes down to the left of their title block with the new one, there's a note here that says that I have provided this for them.
I'm sorry, I'm missing that, on the drawing?
Where it says plan notes, just left of design comment, and Hedifine Engineering Design. Above your signature.
Oh, there are plan notes. Engineering Plan for Plan by Concentrity, thank you. Great. That's all, thank you, Mark.
Okay. So we're all set there?
Yep.
Okay. Evidence of applicant's technical, financial capability to carry out the project as proposed. We did have a statement from the bank, I believe, in this pointy head booklet.
Yep, remember that.
So John, what you're pulling, the features plan is C1?
Yes, C1 has a red line shows the two zones.
Okay, I see the red line now, yeah, okay.
Residential business and commercial fishery and maritime activity.
We okay there? Barings and length of all property lines to be developed and source of this information. It's the bearings, make the pins.
There's a survey prepared by Concentrity that was submitted.
Pardon?
There's a survey prepared by Concentrity that was submitted.
Yep. It's in the spiral bound, bring it.
In the spiral, yeah. Location and size of any existing septic and well, culverts, drains, underground tanks. See the wells? Proposed septic site?
Yep.
Looks good? Proposed and existing well and septic locations shown on plan, yeah? That was from that one. Location names and present width of existing streets and rights of way within or adjacent to proposed development? Location, dimensions and elevations of all existing buildings on the site.
It's on C1.
Yeah, the elevations are ground level elevations. You know, when we get into substantive review, we really need to see some architectural elevations of these platforms and cabins and the tents that go on them because we don't really know how high some of these things are and, and how can we consider the buffering plan without knowing some of these details? I believe we asked for that, but I could be wrong.
We responded, the first time around you asked to clarify you want finished floor elevation on existing residents. And you know, we did that when we went through the, the second round of the completeness review. I mean, you checked the box last time. If you're asking us for something in addition, I'm more than happy to provide you with whatever it is that you articulated for us, Mr. Campbell.
That's what, in addition is what I am asking. It'd be nice to see those when we're discussing whether the buffering is effective or not.
Okay.
Because I have no idea from looking at these plans how high some of these towers are and what the tent's going to look like, how high that'll be on top of that. And I know there are some concerns about that.
And just to clarify, Mark, your concern is that proposed buildings...
Proposed, yes, exactly, yeah.
Great.
So we okay there, you think?
Correct, E3E?
Yes. Location, dimensions of existing driveways, parking and loading areas, walkways and sidewalks on or immediately adjacent to the site.
Yep, that's on C1.
C1 as well. Okay. Location of intersecting roads and driveways within 200 feet of the site. How far is the way is the Bass Harbor Woods Road? Is that within 200 feet?
180 feet.
It's 180 feet, is that shown here somewhere?
Yep, on C1. And then C location map, and also. Oh, there. And then there's 300 feet to the driveway to the north.
To the, I'm sorry, I forget their names.
Clive and...
Clive and Bradley, yeah. Okay, we all set there?
Yep.
Location of open drainage courses, wetlands, stone walls, graveyards, fences, stand-up trees and other important features. Did you have that? Direction of existing surface water drainage across the site. Remember, there were some arrows.
On C2.
C2, okay. Yes, there we go. So we got that? Location, front view dimensions and lighting of existing signs? There are no existing signs? So that should actually be not applicable instead of yes, right? Location, dimensions of any easements and copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions?
Not applicable.
Indication of water supply sufficient in quantity and quality for both normal use and fire protection. Existing well and note included on existing features plan. Good thing.
What's the note that's included on the...
John?
And...
Note, under general notes, under...
That was on the first one, but it's not on the second one. The note, this one, is on the first one, but I don't have it on my second one.
Oh, okay, huh. I was, I was going by this one.
Yeah, see, it's, it's not on this one, on the new one.
There's a note on the plans that shows the nearest hydrant location and we submitted information corresponding to the fire chief about, I feel like I should pull this up.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to block you there, but... It's shining right in my eyes. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, there is a correspondence from the fire chief indicating that there is adequate water supply for fire protection.
Where's that source from?
It was submitted...
Pardon?
February, February 8th. It was reviewed, it was submitted around February 8th.
Do I recall that?
Keith Higgins.
So in the, it's referenced here, there, and then the water demand's there.
Which one are you looking at?
Sort of halfway through that packet. February 28th, yeah, yeah. The email from Keith.
So we're all set there?
Yeah, I'm just going to change on here that there's not a note on the existing features plan. I mean, there is a note about the well and the hydrant.
Okay.
But there's a letter from Keith.
Estimated demand for water supply and sewage disposal together with the location, dimensions of all water supply and wastewater disposal. Evidence of their adequacy for the proposed use, including soils test, pit data, if onsite sewage disposal was proposed. So we do have the septic tank design. I believe it's in here. Is that correct, folks?
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember, was H, HE200 revised in February?
Yeah.
It was original. And there's a little clarification in February, but...
In February, we added a little additional information about water demand.
Of course, I bring the February stuff.
Was it relocated?
The septic has no pass number.
Looks like we're all set there, huh?
Yes.
Yep.
Direction of proposed surface water drainage across the site from the site Where's the assessment of the impact on downstream properties?
In February.
In the February one again, okay.
The revised...
Of course, I bring that one.
Yes, from, from water calculations, or that had a third party that would be done on it.
Looks like we got them, huh?
Yep.
Keep that handy. Provisions for handling solid waste, including hazardous and special, special waste and location and proposed screening of any onsite collection of storage facilities. So we got the dumpster and we have screened. And just that one dumpster, correct? Location, dimensions and materials to be used in the construction, proposed driveways, parking and loading areas and walkways. Any changes in traffic flow onto or off-site. Got that on the site plan itself, the materials of the walkways and that sort of thing. Proposed landscape and buffering. There is a buffer proposed on the plan. The location, dimensions, ground floor elevations, all proposed buildings or building expansion proposed on the site.
Yeah, the, the A, A4F is about proposed buildings.
Yes.
And so these are also shown on the plan. The elevations are on C2. The finished floor elevations. And, Mark, this is probably the relevant paragraph to ask for, for architectural elevations.
Yeah, right, right. Which really isn't on here, but that's...
Right.
An additional request, I think Mr. Baer and Ms. Watt understand that.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. I had a question, I don't know if this is where, it's a location of buildings. I noticed we have a house. Then we have the garage area, but it says cabin on there too. Is that proposed? Is that rental cabin?
Is there the existing note that was on the survey?
Yes.
Or is it, it was on the survey too?
Could we approach with the larger...
It might be on...
Where the garage is, in the inside of the garage, it says garage, it also says cabin. Both of which have the same FFE.
Yeah, right here, cabin.
So that was noted on the existing survey that's kind of multi-level.
Is that a rental unit?
I don't believe so, I think it's for storage, not...
So it's not a cabin you're planning to use for the campground, like, so the 16th cabin?
No, no, there are 15 lodging structures. No, no, there are 15 lodging structures indicated in the dark blue outline.
No, I understand that, I just wanted to make sure that that's not an additional unit.
Is that in the way?
Flocks of sun. What do you think, folks?
I think that, we're still on existing, or proposed buildings?
Yes.
Yeah, that is...
And... And now... Unit eight has moved on this plan, correct?
The locations shown on the plan that you looked at, the most recent plan, reflect those locations that you saw when you were walking the site. There have been, two cabins have been slightly to get them out of some setbacks and to reduce wetland impacts, but very minor adjustments in location.
Any questions, comments? Are we okay?
Not quite yet, sorry. Eight and nine, what's nine? Nine. In the cover letter, it references units eight and unit nine, it also appears that unit seven has shifted.
So, from when you were at, walking the site, the flag locations, the ones that have changed, those onsite locations, are unit eight and unit nine, so unit...
I see, those are different than what we saw in the field.
Correct, correct, so unit eight was shifted approximately 20 feet west in order to pull it out of that 75-foot wetlands setback.
I see that.
And then unit nine was shifted approximately 12 feet, 10 feet north in order to get it outside of the subject building.
Okay, it also appears that units 14 and 15 and seven have moved, and two and five have also shifted.
So, when we revised the plan and added the updated wetlands information, we took the opportunity to also revise the, more accurately reflect where those locations are that you saw when you were out at site visit, so what is in front of you is what you saw at the site, with the exception of those two, the cabins, and nine, which we shifted.
Okay, I think that the interruption's there, yeah.
All right, okay. Anybody else? You all set? Beth?
I'm all set.
Yep. Location, front view, materials and dimensions of proposed signs together with the method for securing the sign, once again, not applicable. So there's no signs. Location and type of exterior lighting, no exterior lighting is proposed? Wait, I think we, there are, there is, yeah, I don't know why this note is on here.
And we, the original application material, we provided a cut sheet for solar light for the park.
Yep.
We okay with that?
Yep.
So the only lighting will be around the parking area and the service buildings? Some other ones there.
Sorry, did you dot? I was looking away. Is the lighting located on the plans? Do we know where it's going?
The lighting, the lights in the parking area, there's no exterior lighting.
Oh, I see that, okay.
Yeah.
Nothing at the service buildings?
I don't think that any exterior lighting is proposed at this time.
Okay, and nothing along any of the pathways to the cabins or tent platforms? I don't see anything on the plan. I see lights at the parking areas.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Am I missing something?
I think you'd have to have more lighting.
There's six lights there that I'm coming?
One, two, three, four, five, six. I count six.
Pardon? So we okay there, guys?
Yeah, because the types are in the packet, we've got the...
Yep.
Location on C1, and then the cut sheets in the...
Location of all utilities, including fire protection. We do have that, plan shows all the fire stuff, right, the dry hydrant and everything? Where is that again?
It's on C1.
C1, okay. Okay, move on?
Yep.
General description of the proposed use or activity, that's included on the application, just here.
Mr. Bear, let me just go back, the original cover letter, under section L Utilities, we did note that there would be some solar downlighting along the pathways, and security lighting at the proposed parking area, which are the cut sheets that we have in front of you, but each individual accommodation is not proposed to have water or sewage discharges, each has an interior solar lighting feature, so just to clarify.
So the lighting on the pathways is not shown on the drawing?
It's noted in the cover letter.
Cover letter from June 30th, or?
October 29th.
October 29th.
Are the solar downlighting, is the solar downlighting different from the security lighting?
Uh, yes.
Fire site lighting.
Utilities. Utilities.
Yep. Do we have a cut sheet for both of those types, or just the one?
We just have the cut sheet for the parking lot lighting, because the solar downlighting would be, I mean, it's... It's just small little solar lights, down drop lighting.
Yeah, it was to light up the numbers so that they could see where they were, insurance is theirs.
We okay with the lighting then? You thinking, Lawson, or...
I'm thinking, I mean, it's, it seems like there's a... I mean, I think it's there, but it was sort of necessary and helpful to have the applicant walk us through it, because, like, you know, we didn't, we missed it the first time. Sort of in part because it feels, well, I guess, because it feels incomplete, because...
When we did the complete, the first time around, one of you had asked about, like, the number, like, the unit number, and you said there's gonna be a light there, it's a post that has a light shining down so they can see the number.
Yeah, the design makes sense, like, I totally understand the concept, but I'm not sure that it's shown on in the application.
It's actually, what you just described is actually different than what's described in the application, what the application describes is lighting along the pathways, and so one of the things, and I get it, but one of the things the butters are gonna be, you know, wondering is whether they're gonna be able to see those lights, and if it's not here, and we don't know exactly what it is, how can anyone say, how can we say that? And so I, just to try to keep it clean, it'd be nice to see them, kind of what they are, how much they're gonna shine, given the, obviously, the interest in the, by the neighbors, which, and reasonably so.
So I think I would suggest that we mark this as incomplete, this, that paragraph.
Eight-four, eight-four eight, right.
Because I think they're just gonna wanna know, like, how, you know, is it on the cabin for the number, is it in the pathways, is it both?
And the location along the trails too.
Right.
Because buffering, once again, comes into play there to block the lights from the neighbor's view. Okay, so that's a no. Location of utilities include fire protection, we did say yes on that, didn't we?
Yeah.
General description of the proposed use or activity, that's where we were. It was on the application.
Yep.
Yep, okay, we got that, fine. And stormwater calculations, erosion, sedimentation, control measures, water quality and or phosphorus export management provisions, if the project requires a stormwater permit from the DEP, or if the planning board determines that such information is necessary based upon the scale of the project or existing conditions in the vicinity of the project.
Did we answer to the one before it?
Pardon?
The peak hours and daily traffic, did we say that that was...
Oh, did I skip that one, thank you. Yep, I did. Let's go back, estimate the peak hour daily traffic to be generated by the project, we do have that somewhere, I know.
The notes are just on the plan, but...
There's a, there's a track generation letter that's similar to the original.
Yeah.
We're okay there. So stormwater calculation, we do have a stormwater report, and we also got a peer review from Greg, right?
Stormwater, yes.
Yep, so we're okay there. And approval block, we have the approval block. So we got everything except for the lights.
What do you think, Mark?
I'm waiting for the motion.
Oh, yeah, a motion to find it incomplete, pending submission of the light information? I mean, it's not something that's gonna take them longer to submit that information, huh?
I might have heard, I'm, they're afraid I see a slippery slope coming up here, if you deem this incomplete after having deemed it complete already, there are changes in the meantime from the ordinance, somebody might try to argue that we haven't begun the substantive review, which I think we did before, the amendments to the ordinance, so you found it complete before, if you think now, having gone through, you want us to supplement, then we will certainly supplement with a lighting detail on the path, but otherwise, we provide you with complete application for how you...
I mean, I kind of get that, I mean, I feel like it's, it's a pretty, it's a detail, but I think it's one that the neighbors and the butters will wanna know about, but I wouldn't want it to, I don't think that that piece will, to me, warrants any further delay and/or any different legal path, at least that's my view, how we get there, and we can talk about that, but it's just a detail that should be there so we know where they are, and so people can see where the lights are gonna be, and understand, you know, whether they can see them or not, but I think that, it's a, it is, it's a detail that shouldn't hold things up, any, you know, substantive review up, that's my view.
My only concern is finding something complete with conditions, and Mr. Bear mentioned slippery slope.
You're concerned that if we find it complete on the condition of an initial sub, I mean, because you also asked for another sub at all, although, that's sort of an extra.
Yeah, it was an extra thing, yeah.
Part of the completeness.
That was a part of the completeness review.
Right. I mean, I think that finding it complete with a condition is different than finding it incomplete.
Yeah. John, any thoughts on that? What's that?
Would you care to share them?
You wanna share them, or?
We would love to hear your thoughts on that.
Get home and yell at the horses.
I think it would be to the planning board's benefit, in order for you to do a substantive review that you have on the information. There's another issue here about wetlands.
Right.
So, yeah, back to the, back to the lighting, it's 8.48, location and type of exterior lighting, and this is require... Location, required location.
I can remember clearly that on the Acacia Wilderness Plans, they had all those lights on the plan itself.
Right, but is that required? I mean, if you can, you could describe it in words, does that tell you the location? It's kind of like, the word complete is like, you know, it's like substantially complete, materially complete, every...
I think what's tricky for me is that we've heard the applicant, that the design intent is different than what is submitted, and so...
What do you mean?
That the, the downlighting on the pathways... Like, we don't know what type that is, and the solar downlighting along the pathways seems different from solar downlighting at each cabin or on a post, eliminating this number at each cabin, and so...
And solar downlighting, we don't know how high the post would be, so a light eight feet off the ground would be different from the perspective with the neighbors than something on a boardwalk post.
I just think, in this 1029, the proposed, there will be some solar downlighting along the pathways, some is not a very good word.
Some could be a lot or a little, right? Some could be a lot or a little, right.
Yep.
Can you be ready to provide clarification on the information that was included in the October cover letter? Specifying more clearly what the intent?
The intent doesn't tell us the location, which is what we're being asked, for one thing, location and type.
But, and I think what Mr. Waugh is saying is, we'll give you a plan of the paths and show you where these lights are, they're not eight feet out, four feet, they're the kind that stick in the ground.
A little foot level things.
A little flush with the ground. But I come back to my original point. We deemed our application complete. There's nothing about the lighting that is different now or different before.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, when this was submitted in October, we could take it at face value. We now understand that the design intent is different from what was submitted. That's the information.
I don't think, I don't think that's, that's, I don't think that that's necessarily a fair characterization. We said in the narrative, some lighting along the path, and that's what we're still talking about here. So what, I mean, we're happy to give you a plan to clarify, and I hear what Mr. Waugh is saying. It makes absolute sense. I'm sure you all believe the same thing. People want to know where these lights are going to be. That's fine. Let's shine a light on the subject and do that. We'll give you additional information on lighting. That doesn't make the application incomplete, especially if you've already deemed it complete.
So a couple things going on here. The, the distinction between the lighting for the cabin itself and the path. You know, it's probably kind of the same thing. It's on the path. It's, I'm not, that's not where, it's not frankly where I'm, where I'm focusing. I'm looking at our, looking at our code, and I'm trying to ascertain what level of specificity it requires. And it's not, it's not a model of clarity. Because I, and I think what we are, what we have, which is rightfully so, have done right into a level of required clarity because of the interest in these sorts of projects. But if you look at what it says, it doesn't even say it needs to be on the plan. It just needs to be in the application. Location and type of exterior lighting. It's kind of a close call. Because it, there's certain, I mean, location, the pathway is a location, and the pathways are shown. Now, does it need to show exactly where it, like, put a dot on where it is on the pathway?
What page are you looking at?
I am looking at the site plan review ordinance, well, depends. What are you, are you talking about the ordinance?
Yeah.
It is in, I, you know, I'm looking at the citation on our checklist.
Eleven to twenty-four.
Article, yeah, five, seven. I know, four. What was it? A, where, booklets are just wonderful here. I think it's A. Four, little A, eight, little A H, H.
What page? Okay.
Eleven to twenty-four.
Ten. Or twenty-five. Well, it's go to, oh, ten to twelve.
Eleven to twenty-five.
Eleven to twenty-five, okay. Mine's a little different.
Also adjusting your land use ordinance. So three, three, seven, three. Yep, right here.
Okay, there we go, there. This is location and type of exterior lighting.
Yeah, I mean, it says exactly. So it doesn't, and you know, I look back, it doesn't, if you go to the beginning of that article, it doesn't say.
Your land use ordinance is very clear with a lot of technical detail about what needs to be there in life.
Thanks, but, yep, right now, we're looking at the site plan review checklist.
Right.
Which is not the land use ordinance checklist.
But to prove the permit, to involve.
That's a substantive review, right? So that's.
It's completeness under both ordinances. I'm sorry, I don't need to argue, and I apologize for it, but you were looking for detail, and there's a lot of it in the land use ordinance.
Well, that's a problem if we're going to, this is the checklist we have.
Right, and we might find this complete or incomplete or whatever it is for the site plan. But we probably shouldn't move on to substantive review of the site plan until we've found that land use ordinance is complete. Okay, maybe I'm wrong.
And we don't have the land use ordinance checklist.
We could, right, we could flip to the land use ordinance and go.
Is that the process?
Pardon?
Is that the process we're undertaking now?
You have to go by the old ordinance, which is dated June, Feb., twenty twenty-one.
What about November second, twenty twenty-one? What about November second, twenty twenty-one?
That's site plan review.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Land use is, would it be May fifth, twenty twenty-one?
Yes, okay, yes.
It's the time of meeting.
Right. Right.
Eighteen ninety-five, I R B.
What page?
Of the land use.
We still haven't determined whether the site plan review is complete.
Yeah, yeah. Personally, I would find it complete, but for substantive review, recommend that they supplement that information so that we can review that when we have, when we go through the substantive review and have a public hearing, so that people know exactly where those lights are. But I think, at least according to the language in the site plan review ordinance. Like I said, it's not very specific. At least it's not, and we're talking about the site plan review ordinance. You know, and if we're going to require people to actually put it on the plan, that's what it should say. But I do think it's important for people to see, you know, when we discuss it.
Are you making a distinction between complete with a condition and complete with a recommendation?
Yes, the latter.
The latter.
Yep.
And so it's possible if they don't, the applicant chooses not to follow the recommendation. It's not, there's a.
I think it'd be hard, it could be hard for us to find then that the buffering is adequate if we don't actually know where the lights are.
But it doesn't necessarily.
No, you can't.
But it doesn't necessarily disqualify them, as opposed to if it's with a condition, they don't submit more information.
I think that's, because I think, again, I think the eight point four H.
Yep.
Location and type, like, what does that even, it doesn't say, like, like specify, you know, brand, lumens, you know, how.
Right, there's no.
Like, what does that mean?
Well, some of that's in the land use ordinance.
Yeah, okay, where, but so when we're looking at site plan review, how, and according to a checklist that refers to specific regulations in the site plan.
Site plan review.
How are they, how is an applicant, how are we even supposed to know to go look at the land use ordinance?
If we, so, and they did submit cut sheets for some solar downlighting.
I mean, do we have a completeness checklist for the land use ordinance? Is there a regulation that requires us to do that?
Yes.
There's a regulation that requires it?
If you, if you were familiar with site plan, it's very beginning.
Yep.
It says the purpose.
Yep.
And then it says.
But the checklist doesn't follow that. It doesn't incorporate the land use ordinance.
You're, you're correct there. But in the site plan review ordinance, it tells you that you have to review it under the land use.
So we kind of just make it up then as we go, like, because there's nothing here for us to look at, and there's nothing that an applicant would, would know. If they, if they looked, saw this checklist, they wouldn't know, they wouldn't know that. And I'm just, it's a rhetorical question.
There, there was a time where we had checklists for both, correct? And then with the changes in the site plan review connecting that were approved at the November town meet, uh, November elections. That connected them in some way, right? Yes.
Yes. So, but I've not heard any analysis, though, when we're going down through this, you know, and the citations to the site plan review that refer over to the land use ordinance and incorporate that as well. We haven't, we haven't been doing it. I'm just making an observation.
And when we get to the substantive review, we'll have to make sure that we're looking at both and seeing.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I, that's how I interpreted kind of what we're doing. Apparently, that's what I interpreted what we're doing. Otherwise, this document would look different.
Right, or there'd be another document.
Right.
As I said with you, Mr. CEO.
Did you determine the site plan?
We didn't do that.
I'm going to move that we, I'm going to move that we find the, the applicant has met the requirements for completeness for site plan review with the recommendation that they provide additional detail on the lighting and the pathways to provide the public with additional information so that we can consider that information during substantive review and during the public hearing.
You're second, room anybody?
I'm not ready to second.
I just don't.
Well, seconded for.
For discussion.
For discussion purposes.
All right, so now we can discuss?
Yes.
Because I'm still trying to wrap my head around the, like, that if we enter the standard in both the land use and the site plan. Should we be able, should we refer to the land use standards to see if we have enough information to review the lighting? Plan, like, it seems to me like we didn't do that for, I don't know, wetlands and parking, because we have enough information to review those. But when we got the lighting, now we have this question, like, do we have enough information or not? And that it's useful, and I think appropriate to then be able to say, well, during substantive review, we're going to need to look at both ordinances. And, and so now, when we look at completeness, we can see, do we have enough information?
I mean, we're making a recommendation to the applicant. It's at their peril whether they provide that additional information or they provide additional information that meets the land use ordinance. It's their burden to do that. To me, this is a very sort of mechanical exercise to make sure that the application has the basic stuff for us to even look at it substantively. If it, we could still find, even if, even if it meets the requirements for completeness, that they substantively have not provided information that we need to make a substantive determination that it's, you know, approvable.
So it's incomplete?
Well, because they have submitted, and, and what's interesting, what you just said reminds me of other submissions where they've included, the applicant has included, like, a buffering plan. And it wasn't a very, like, complete one, but it was a buffering plan, like, check the box.
It's a plan. It's sketched out on a piece of napkin, and then, you know, whether it.
And then when we get substantive review, we say, well, there's not enough information here. We don't actually know how tall these trees are, or whatever it is, that buffering plan. And it's at that stage that we say that this does not meet the standard. And so here, we do have a lighting plan.
It's described. It's probably not, it would be difficult to substantively pass muster.
Pass muster.
So we're saying, look, you should fill that in.
But there is something here in the submission where they've included.
I guess it's a.
Some types, some locations, of some lights.
Yeah.
So when do we get to the technical part where?
After we find it complete, we'll do the public hearing, and then we'll do a.
Substantive review.
Review and.
And if new information comes in at that, anywhere along that process.
So really, what would happen here, if we found this incomplete, they're just going to come back to us with a plan that's complete the way we wanted to, showing the lighting, right? It's just going to delay the process, which they're going to provide us with that information to begin with. And we have admittedly a very bare bones description of what they're planning to do here.
Does finding it incomplete, you say it delays the process, does it actually stop the process and?
No, they'll, they'll come back with the plan. That's the only issue we found that wasn't in compliance. So they'll just come back with that and ask for a completeness review again.
I'm not going to go down that road, Mr. Chairman. We submitted an application. You deemed it complete. I, I accept the analogy that was being discussed over here. Basically, an application completeness is a checklist with placeholders. You may not like the parking layout, you may not like the lighting design, but there is one. So the application is complete. You've deemed it complete before. As I said an hour ago, if you deem it incomplete now, I'd have to appeal that determination because you're subjecting us now to rules and regulations that weren't in effect when you deemed it complete before. So I, I don't know why you're going down this road.
I don't necessarily agree with that, Mr. Baer.
I don't know what was that, what you said.
Dan, were you going to say something?
So, Dan Poligero presents our vote with the butters. Respectfully, this board has never, ever determined that the application was complete under the land use ordinance. Your land use ordinance requires a completeness review under Article eight. You've only ever done the site plan review completeness ever with respect to this. I think your ordinance structure requires both. I don't care how you proceed, but, you know, I don't want to end up in dealing with Mr. Baer and appeals over things that we can solve now.
Can we solve them now? Because the, the land use ordinance, which I, I think I heard your, your discussions correctly, and Mr. Chairman is correct me if I'm wrong with him, or, or, anyway. You don't go through a completeness checklist for a land use app, for application under the land use ordinance. You may have been passed, but you haven't been. You didn't subject this application to a completeness review. And that ordinance says that you have to make that determination within thirty-five days of the filing of the application. The application was filed back in October two thousand twenty-one, and this is the first time I'm hearing the word land use application completeness checklist. So we got ourselves a little twisted around an axle here, but it's not what the applicant's making.
I've been talking about this issue for years, the prior iterations of this application.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If you determine the application is complete, and then you go public here and do a substantial review, and you don't have sufficient information, what are you going to do? Deny it?
Okay.
I don't think that's all that's fair to the applicant.
What, to find it incomplete?
No, no.
To?
To say it's complete. And then go through the review and find it's not adequate and deny the application.
What's not fair about the?
What happens if it doesn't meet the buffering or the lighting standards?
Right.
What happens if it doesn't meet the wetland standards? What happens if it doesn't meet the buffering standards?
Then we deny that.
That's all later in substantive review.
Right, and does that not fair to the applicant?
Yeah, it's a two-step process. It's a two-step process, right? We just see if the application's complete. But there's no substantive review of it. It's just.
I'm not saying there is. I'm just saying that if you don't have all the information, you do your substantive review, your only option is deny the application, and then they'd have to, the applicant would have to resubmit a whole new application.
That's right.
Is that what you want?
Well, in this case, what I've suggested is that we recommend that they supplement the lighting piece so that we avoid it in that particular situation. If there are other issues that are, it's not, again, it's not our, it's not our hunt to ensure that they substantively meet all the requests.
I'm just trying to be fair to the applicant.
Yeah.
And have them come back and get shut down. So if you wanna make a motion that is complete based on following those other things.
Which is what Brett did. That's a motion on the table now.
Right. And although, or, and we're talking specifically about the site plan review ordinance.
Right.
Right. We haven't yet, I mean, I guess we've discussed the land use ordinance, but we haven't reviewed and gone through it.
So we're gonna have to do that too, if we find the site plan review ordinance complete or standards here complete? We still have to go through the other one, the LWO.
Well, that's, the applicant is now aware of that, so if they submit the information.
Well, you know, if you go.
You did the same thing to A W will.
Katie Wildin.
Yeah, we did both.
Yeah, we found both.
We did both.
Alright.
Right, so I think that's what we should do here. And it's possible, I don't know yet, we haven't gone through it, but it's possible that the site plan is complete but the land use is not. That could be a scenario.
Brett's looking at something here.
Oh, I'm just trying to figure out what criteria are, are for completeness, if there are actually separate criteria for completeness under the land use ordinance, or just like a pro forma, you paid the fee, you know, you, I mean, the site plan review sets out specifically what we are to review for completeness. And list, you know, a lot of information. I don't actually see that in the land use ordinance. It says, yeah, you've gotta review it for completeness, but that could just be like, you know, you submitted the, you've actually filled out the application. Because the land use ordinance is more substantive in nature. It's not.
Site plan.
It's not the site plan.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't actually see. So I'm not, I guess I'm not buying this idea that there's some sort of separate completeness process under the land use ordinance yet, unless someone's got some, can help me understand kind of, you know, my thinking on it. Hearing nothing. I think, I think I've.
I mean, I think you're right. I mean, either the checklists that we've done in the past with land use ordinance have been shorter and.
But I think, I think it all comes down to the change in November.
And maybe we got rid of that, we got rid of that stuff.
Yeah, we have, because of.
It's a red herring. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I got a motion. We had a second. We've had some discussion. Are we gonna vote?
Well, you just said something about November that I'm not quite sure I fully understood. You said something about a red herring and something happened in November.
In November, one of, we voted to change the site plan review ordinance. Was that the one? It was then, not, not in the town meeting, right?
That's right.
So that's why, they weren't tied together. Remember, a long time ago, we separated, the site plan review ordinance used to be part of the land use ordinance. Then it was taken out and made separate. That led to problems where we had to do both. And that was supposedly corrected through language that voters approved, and I believe that it was in November.
Yep. So there's no, like, separate checklist, you know, so that we're not, it is what it is. It's, you know, it's, it's again.
But, but we do have to apply land use ordinance standards when we review the
Oh, absolutely.
Application.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And do we not need to find, I mean, there's a paragraph that says that we have to find it complete. Do we not need to do that? The land use ordinance.
Well, we could make a separate motion.
Right. I think, I mean, what I'm suggesting is, like, I think that we still need to find the land use ordinance.
Yeah. I'll amend my motion to include reference to the land use ordinance as well.
Well, you can't amend it. Okay, first of all, so. Let's vote it down. Let's vote it down. It'd be clean and you start all over again. How's that?
Or we, or we could go to.
Do a separate one.
Up and just do a second, separate motion, which.
You could do that too.
And I like the idea of separating them.
Okay, let's do it separate.
Maybe taking a breath and I just wanna make sure that.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the table. To find the site plan review checklist for Pointy Head Campground to be complete with
With a recommendation.
Recommendation that the applicant provides us with the locations and a better description of the lighting. Correct?
Yeah.
All in favor? Four, nothing?
You wanna do a second one? Not yet, because, like, I mean, do we actually know that it's complete for the land use ordinance? Have you looked at that all?
Yeah, I'm looking at, I did look at it, because I was trying to understand, because if we were really, you know, that's about it. I'm about ready to walk out of here.
They're all performance standards.
Right, exactly. They're all performance standards. So you can't, so it, it doesn't make sense to do a completeness. It's because you would, you would merge the substantive review with it and it would be, right. So, so there's no separate criteria. It just, it says you need to do it, but it's, it really kicks you over into the site plan review because there's no criteria listed in the land use ordinance upon which to determine whether an application is complete other than performance standards. And you don't do that until you get the substantive review. So it's kind of a wonky way to do it, but that's what we did.
That, that probably makes sense if the site plan review provisions are part of the land use.
Yep.
And so we ask for the lighting, and you're gonna provide us with the elevations and descriptions of the cabins and platforms, right? Can I make one more request? There's no, are you having a central fire pit?
Yes.
Where is it on the plan?
That's what I was reading. It says that you have to submit.
It's not on the plan.
These things.
It is?
That's the rear criteria after a substantial complete application. These are the, these are the findings, but there's no.
Right.
There's no.
And then what about, like, all this stuff? Do we need?
I mean, it's kind of just under consideration.
Right.
Show me please.
Do we need to affirm that we have information about?
Oh, fire pit there.
We do, but, like, sign standards.
Oh, yeah, I see it here and there.
But when you're applying standards, you're.
Start bringing back my glass.
Do you go through that substantive? Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Whether we have to find it complete. Yeah, I'm.
Okay.
I'm convinced.
Okay, we also have some wetland studies. One submitted by the applicant. And a peer review, one type, also submitted by Mr. Palaguer.
I wouldn't call that a peer review.
Okay, by, one submitted by
The opponent.
Mr. Palaguer's clients.
Is that the May twenty-seventh document or is there a newer one?
Maybe July.
July, well.
Alright.
It's not part of our application law, not what I'm.
But my point is, they, they come to quite different conclusions.
Sure, yep.
And so do we wanna have our own independent reviewer look at it? Engineer.
Yeah, but it probably has to be done in April and May, so.
No, I, no, not from, that, that's for the virtual pools, which is actually a lot in there, but I'm talking about the wetlands themselves. There was some question about that ditch in there between the two wetlands and whether that made it greater than ten acres.
Right.
That's the only way the opponents can succeed their argument. We have more arguments than that about the waters, wetlands, freshwater waters. It's a big difference. And your ordinance stresses only.
Can you, let us figure this, you know, I'm sorry, but like, we're not quite ready for feedback, because I mean, in terms of process, we could discuss that tonight and sort of hear from both sides and try to, like, begin wrapping our heads around it. It seems like it's, it's part of the substantive review conversation.
Right.
I guess I don't know yet if we have enough information from, in sort of in front of us and in front of us for us to make a good determination, or if we're gonna need our own, you know, third party or whatever, peer, peer review to help us navigate this. I think in part because I haven't, I mean, I've read the documents, but I haven't heard the arguments and there are certain rebuttals and we could do that tonight and then make determination if we wanna ask for more things, but, but in a way that feels different from the land use ordinance. That feels different, separate from the conversation about land use ordinance being complete. And we haven't, I don't think, found the full application complete under both yet. We haven't voted on that yet.
My only concern is having, if we're going to do this, let's have it done before we go to get to the substantive review. Because that's very important.
I agree, right, right.
Shouldn't we button up the completeness first?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do what?
Button up, you know, make a finding that it's complete under, to the extent we need to, find it complete under the land use ordinance as well?
The, the second motion you were gonna make?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I thought you were gonna do that.
I will make a motion that the application is complete under the land use ordinance.
Second. Motion is second on table to find the application is complete under the town's land use ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor? Or nothing? Okay. Now.
Now we can talk about the process.
Do we want a technical review on the two wetlands arguments here? Mr. Bear, you don't have any objection to us asking for another opinion?
I don't think it is my place to object if you choose to do that if you find the issue to be complicated. I don't think you're gonna learn it. You're not, it's not gonna become any clearer if you listen to the final experts here tonight. Find your good materials to be educated and find your opinions to be able to.
Mark, it seems like you're maybe leaning towards asking for a technical review. Is that?
Boy, I have two different, the wetlands are important to this project.
I agree. They're important more to this project.
For review of this project, okay?
Yep.
I'm getting two different opinions on it.
And you'd like a third?
It'd be nice to get one that, somebody that's gonna look at them both and report back to us as well.
And somebody that is presumably not biased. I mean, I think that all engineers are, I mean, I trust all the engineers' work, but the fact we have two qualified engineers saying different things leaves us in a hole. And the fact that they're both working for opposing, opposing sides.
Right. They have their, they're working for their own interests or their clients' interests. I don't even know who we have do it. Could Greg do it, you think?
Maybe stupid.
He's not a, he's not a weapons.
Yeah. You have any suggestions, John? Do you know anybody? We'd have to find somebody.
It's, it's all about the ditch, huh?
Well, DEP might be able to recommend somebody.
Not about the ditch.
What's that?
Not about the ditch. Why do you keep looking over there, Mr. Chairman?
The reactions.
Do you look at us?
DEP could recommend somebody, I'm sure.
So you think that we should?
I just, I mean, it's just two totally different things, so I mean, I just feel to be fair to both sides to, to get another opinion that is, like they said, not.
Care to make a motion to that effect?
Well, I make a motion that we get another opinion, hire another professional to do our own report.
On the wetlands.
On the wetlands.
Issues, yep.
There was a letter in the applicant's submitted that was an email between John Cullen from the DEP. And it says, "In answer to your first question, Mr. Craig, only that portion of the wetland that lies on the shoreline is considered a wetland of special significance."
This is something about the ditch in the same letter.
Beth made a motion, if anybody wants a second in the room.
Has John Cullen been down to look at it? Has John Cullen been down to look at it?
He retired.
Oh, he did retire, huh?
Answer your question is yes.
And he's been down to look at it?
Out Colorado Elko.
Elkoning. We, we have a motion. I'll second it just for discussion. I'm not hearing much discussion here.
It seems to me like there's a lot of information here. There's probably even more information that our attorneys and the engineers have that we, you know, can hear from. And and then I think, right, because I think the attorneys. And then I think, right, because I think the attorneys, there's like, they're both navigating the legal definitions and ordinance, and there's also navigating the environmental assessments. I don't, I guess, it doesn't seem to be like a third.
You don't think we need that?
I'm not sure if we need it, and I don't think it would hurt, I mean, and it could, and it could be super helpful, but I'm not...
I mean, isn't, I've just kind of read through the stuff here, isn't the issue whether an old ditch cooperates to connect to, I mean, isn't that like an ascertainable just question to ask somebody? I mean, we have one answer.
You mean, right.
It says no.
Yeah.
Which kind of makes sense.
The other ones you guys have to make under your ordinance, that's not an expert.
Yep. I mean, isn't that just a question to someone, like a...
So, we could, we could limit it to just a question on the ditch itself.
Isn't that, my message, isn't that the only issue?
No, no.
Read your definition of forested wetland and freshwater wetland, and then looking at Mr. Moise's report, and see that most of the wetlands on this park, they are forested wetlands.
Yeah, I didn't know.
And as Mr. Pileggi's earlier expert said, it's non-jurisdictional. Has to be 10 or more contiguous freshwater wetlands to be near jurisdiction. And these are forested wetlands, there's not more than 10 acres of freshwater wetland. They are strictly... And Mr. Broschu said, these are non-jurisdictional wetlands. In an early letter to this board.
Do you remember that, Mr. Broschu?
Oh, which one? It was Mr. Broschu, no, I'm getting all these people confused.
It was Mr. Pileggi's earlier expert.
Was that on May 27, maybe?
A letter here, September 16, 2020, Pointy Head Campground Post-Site Inspection Report, addressed to Mr. Pileggi.
So that goes way back, then.
Hasn't changed, though.
Right, right, right.
Page two of that letter. Wetlands need to be mapped by wetland scientists in accordance to state regulations to determine any regulatory requirements. While the town of Tremont does not regulate wetlands, the project would likely require permits from both DEP and the US Army Corps. No reason it doesn't, because there aren't 10 acres of contiguous freshwater wetlands. This is his.
It's just long, and it's not what it says, and tonight's complete this review, and now we're doing some... So there's a motion right now, that's been seconded?
What's that?
There's a motion that's been...
Yeah, we have a motion to second it, yeah.
If there's not an available environment, environment fund here to provide a third, you know, technical review?
Yes.
What?
What then?
What then? Like, does the fact that we've asked for one, does that delay the project until we can find one?
I believe it does.
Have a public hearing, or a substantive review? I mean, environmental, there are definitely environmental engineers, you know, you might have to go to...
There's a list of certified, you know, you can go to the state website and find a list of certified people.
I just want clarification, I think, that if we approve the motion, are we then going to wait for substantive review until we have the results from that review? Is that your desire?
That would be my thinking, because to me, that's an important component of the review.
Yep, yep.
If we're going to do that.
Right. Did you find it? Did you find it?
I'm just reading through the definitions here to figure out. Other than for, other than forested weapons. Other than forested weapons. Forested weapons defined, there we go.
I'm thinking, that's always a negative problem. If we did make this decision tonight, we scheduled a public hearing, we're hearing from all these experts. If then, we still wanted to go for a third-party review, we could do that, and just delay the findings of fact and substantive review. Set?
Makes sense to me. Are we bound by a turnaround time, like a deep deadline?
So, I'll just make a comment here on the wetlands issue.
Yeah.
I don't, I haven't ascertained yet what the, you know, significance is of the various definitions, but I am curious to hear why this would not, these would not be forested wetlands, because, I mean, it's defined as a freshwater wetland dominated by woody vegetation. If you just look at C1, and you look at where the wetlands are, and then you look at the little vicinity map, it's covered in trees. And I remember walking down there, sort of the right side of the property is a field where it's high. C1 defines both, it says PPO, not C1, the first stormwater submission by Mr. Moise identifies some as scrub wetlands, and some as forested wetlands. Scrub. And he, in his report, identifies the scrub wetlands as not forested, not reading the definition of forested. He uses, I think it's PPO.
PSS. PSS is scrub shrub wetlands, and PFO are forested wetlands.
Do we have scrub, shrub, whatever, in our definitions?
Well, we haven't been on-site, I'm not sure.
No, but that's fine, but we have that, you know if we have that in our definition? Do we make that distinction in our code? You call it forested. Forested is the PFO.
PFO.
Right.
Forested wetlands, per your definition, are over, trees over 20 feet high.
Yeah. And then freshwater are all grass.
Right.
So it's going to get down, how tall the trees are? It's part of it.
Mr. Berry's on it, not here, Mr. Moise.
It's, I can tell you what, it's, I've been down there, it's pretty woody on that side, I mean, it's kind of, this field on the, you know, as I'm looking at the property, I guess it'd be the south side, that's kind of high and field, and as you go down, it gets pretty foresty, and maybe, I don't know, like, but anyway, that's just my observation. Yeah, I, I don't know if we an expert for that one, but it feels like it's something that we could, you know, there are definitions here, there are things that we might need to do another, you know, walk down there, maybe, I don't know. It really comes down to whether, there's two things, it's whether the, you know, which, what kind of wetland it is, and then if it's, if it's not the forested one, it's whether that ditch is, makes a contiguous.
And who's going to determine that? Us?
Pin the tail on top of it.
We're the person, we hired to do this.
It's a close call, right? I mean, you, but I, you know.
What'd you think of my suggestion, perhaps, to wait till after the public hearing to make that decision?
That's fine with me, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think tonight, I'm not yet convinced that a third party would be necessary, but...
It's a, you know, it's a judgment call based on the trees, size of the trees, and kind of...
Okay, so to move along, we have a motion to second on the table to hire this person, okay, but, so, let's just vote it down, to be clean, okay? And...
Let's vote it up.
Does that sound good?
Call for a vote, yeah.
Okay. Motion is second on the table to hire a wetlands expert to look at, give an opinion on the wetlands. All in favor? All opposed? Or nothing, okay? So they voted that down, so wait for that. So, I think the only thing left is we have to schedule a public hearing, right?
Do we need three weeks' notice for that?
Can we get it for the August 9 meeting, John?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take John's report. I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Pointy Head Campground for August 9, at 6:00 PM, here in the Harvey Kelly Meeting Room.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the table to schedule a public hearing for Pointy Head Campground, 6:00 PM, August 9, here in the Harvey Kelly Meeting Room. Any discussion?
We can't make it then.
Yeah, I have.
These are useful.
Oh. Before I made the motion. Okay.
That's all right, that's part of discussion.
Okay.
So, sorry, the applicant nor the phone-in can make our stand?
Neither one of you can make it, so, when can you make it?
Their next meeting, the...
The 23rd, and I'm going to be here, the 23rd.
The 23rd will be the next one, Beth won't be here, but if the three of us show up, we'll have a forum.
August 23rd?
If that's, that's, it says open, yeah.
And if the three of you show up, and the vote is two to one, is it, is that a favorable vote?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Majority of the board, just majority of those at present voting?
Yes.
Pretty positive?
Yes.
Yeah, just thought of that.
It's been done date before. So, when's the next one after that? September?
13.
Is that a better date for everybody else?
I can read either or both.
Well, we're sort of doing a public hearing at this point, not necessarily, but it's a fact, but depending on how the public hearing goes. I mean, I think the applicant should be in the public hearing.
What's our deadline, after finding this complete again?
Yes, sir.
What's that?
35 days.
35 days?
Unless...
Unless the applicant agrees to a greater time.
The thing with the, you know, I mean, call him a opponent, Mr. Pileggi, and his people can be here on the 23rd, and so can we?
You can both be there on the 23rd.
I think we have a motion on the table.
Yep, yep. Do you need a second?
It already has a second. We're in discussion for having a public hearing on a day that nobody can be there, so we'd rather vote for that.
Vote it down, okay, that's easiest, okay, all in favor? All opposed? Or nothing, okay? Probably could amend it, but it's easier this way. Motion for a public hearing on the 23rd?
I'll make a motion for a public hearing on August 23, at 6:00 PM, here in the Harvey Kelly.
Motion is second on the table to have a public hearing at Pointy Head Campground, August 23, 6:00 PM, here in the Harvey Kelly Meeting Room. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. You'll be someplace probably cool, huh?
No, I'm going to Millinocket.
The magic city of the north.
In that case, you won't be someplace cool. Except for the trip, otherwise, maybe, okay. Anything else? And otherwise, we'll set the date for the next meeting. John, we have anything for that agenda? At this point? Well, we'd better set the date, anyway.
August 9.
What's that? Oh, yeah, there's that too, yeah. Motion is...
I'll make a motion to schedule our next meeting for August 9, at 6:00 PM, here in the Harvey Kelly Meeting Room.
August 9?
August 9.
Yeah, I'm not going to be here, but that's fine.
But Beth will be here.
I'll second it, yeah.
Also, if we don't have this business going on, Jeff can participate as well.
Right, and if I have a court, I want to be here. We can do it.
Okay, motion is second on the table, we had a second, right?
Yes, I said...
Okay. To set the date for the next meeting, 6:00 PM, August 9, here in the Harvey Kelly Meeting Room. All in favor, say aye? Okay. Take a motion to adjourn, start back there, I can't see that clock. What is it?
A motion to adjourn at 7:45.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the table to adjourn at 7:45. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, folks.
I pulled everything out of everything, so I don't weigh it out.
I had all this stuff, and I'm thinking, how much stuff do I really need? A long and tortured path.